Okay, good afternoon. I would like to remind everyone that our meetings are web-streamed and televised. For those in attendance, I would ask you to ensure your phones are on silent mode. I now call the meeting to order. Approval of the agenda. We have a large amendment to the agenda before us today with the consent of committee. We will move up the staff report 6D on the Coopie matter to be heard directly after Tom Klein's deputation so we can deal with both matters at the same time. Do I have a mover and a seconder for the agenda as amended? Counselor Huffman and Counselor Rabbits, all those in favor? Carrie, is that a question, Counselor Michelli? Sure, go ahead. That's Carrie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are we including in that any other changes to the agenda?
Are you referencing this large stack of paper on your desk?
No, just in general, is there...
Oh, sure.
Have we just passed that or have we passed simply the... I know we're approving the agenda and changes, which you've already mentioned, but...
You would like to make a change to the agenda, is what you're saying?
Yes, I would please.
Sure, go ahead.
With your permission. If I could ask that Item 6D from our council information package be pulled for some discussion?
Okay, Counselor Michelli moving the Item 6D from our information package. Cannabis investigation update be added to the agenda for discussions. Can I have a seconder for that? Counselor Rabbits. The information package, staff memos? Okay, moved, seconded by Counselor Rabbits. All those in favor? Okay, carried and amended 6D. Andy, you'll let me know when we should discuss that?
Yes, through you, Chair Martin. So we will put that as the last discussion item on the agenda then.
Okay. Declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? Counselor Van Passen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a declaration on Item 6A, the Blue Harbor recommendation.
Okay, thank you. We'll move along to deputations. A reminder to deputations, you have five minutes in total. I will remind you when you're nearing the end of your deputation. Also, a reminder to leave your microphones on mute when you are not speaking. Barb and Jim, regarding backyard chickens. You may go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to be before council today. I appreciate your time and efforts in all of this as well. We are presenting with the new trending of backyard chickens in suburban neighborhoods. We are concerned citizens as to the bylaws of Norfolk County currently. The issue is that the pro-chicken ordinances are somewhat vague, incomplete, and regulations spread out throughout multiple sections of the code. And this is an issue we hope to address to make it simpler to understand for the chicken owners and for all of those who would be living beside or around neighbors who have backyard chickens in Norfolk County. We live in Yin subdivision in Waterford, and in March of 2020, our neighbors informed us that they were considering backyard chickens. They asked our opinion about this, and we were not in favor for many reasons from what we had read and understood about the health risks possible to ourselves, our family, and pets as we live in very close proximity. There was no fence between the properties, and we had moved to Waterford in 2018 from Bloomsburg, where our neighbor Grant Elliott died from salmonella poisoning in 2017 from picking up eggshells on the property from free-range chickens belonging to his neighbors. Of course, that was before backyard chickens were legislated in Norfolk County for suburban areas. We began to research all that we could about backyard chickens, hence developing some possible additional bylaws and amendments to the existing Norfolk County bylaws. We're not opposed to backyard chickens, but we would like to see possible ordinances in place to avoid possible health and safety risks in the future. One of our studies was Norfolk, Virginia, USA. We were very impressed with this. The Department of Health issues an annual environmental health chicken permit application, which lists many requirements which chicken owners must read and initial agreeing to ordinances set by the city. A non-refundable fee is paid by the applicant established by the Director of the Department of Health. This would ensure that the responsibility of the chicken owners to adhere to the keeping and handling of chickens according to the bylaws would avoid any of the health hazards while providing adequate health precautions. This would also put the risk of lawsuits against Norfolk County in the event of a serious health risk like death to salmonella and put it in the hands of the chicken owners. We see in the Toronto study that there is an indemnity clause that's part of the registration in the city of Toronto currently, and we feel that's something that needs to be done as well. Secondly, we would propose a website of all the bylaws and information to be made available to chicken owners and the community, clearly and simply explaining the process of becoming chicken owners, the bylaws, information regarding health and safety, listing the various diseases carried by chickens such as salmonella, E. coli, Campy lactobacter, et cetera, how to detect the diseases in the chickens, how and where to dispose of chicken manure in suburban areas, list of poultry veterinarians in the area who actually treat chickens, costs involved in that process, how and where to dispose of dead chickens, or what to do with the chickens who no longer produce eggs, the necessity of adhering to biosecurity issues by moving chicken coop around the property, how and to whom reporting of non-compliance issues is handled, et cetera. For example, do chicken owners know it's not... that they're not allowed to dispose of chicken manure in the garbage bags at the curb? Thirdly, we would like to see zoning restrictions so that backyard chickens would be prohibited near areas zoned for grocery stores or food establishments due to possible contamination and predators that will come as raccoons, coyotes, vultures, rats, mice, or infestations of lice and flies are part of backyard chickens. Fourthly, we would suggest that part of the permit would ensure that each neighbor that is abutting the proposed chicken owner's property would sign an agreement of permission before a permit would be issued.
Barb, pardon the interruption, you have one minute left.
Fifth recommendation in regards would be the distance of the lot line between mutual yards to be increased 20 feet instead of the current bylaw which says nine feet. And the sixth one would be that there would be a registry and licensing and banning of backyard chickens so that the county is continually updated and aware where these locations are. And in closing, I'd just like to thank you and particularly Mayor Crystal Chop for the opportunity to express our concerns and recommendations, working towards compliance with health and safety for all citizens living in a community where backyard chickens are now the trend for food security and enjoyment of chickens as pets in Norfolk County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of the deputation? Okay, seeing none. May I have a motion to receive it as information? Counselor Columbus, Mayor Chop, all those in favor? And that's carried. Okay, if there's nothing further, we will proceed to the next item. Andrew Pierce is... Counselor Columbus.
May I comment on this? These people went to the effort of putting some ideas forward with respect to backyard chickens. I'm just wondering whether this submission of theirs should not be put to bylaw for some comments back to council. Mr. Clerk, would that be in order?
Through you, Chair Martin. If committee desires to pass a motion to refer the deputation to staff for appropriate response...
Then this is not something can be done just by direction, activity direction, or do you want a motion?
I see the CAO saying that it's okay, so we'll report to... We'll get bylaw to respond.
Okay, as long... I'd like to have them comment on this and have our bylaw department do their homework with respect to these suggestions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing nothing further, we'll move along. Andrew Pierce, request to amend subdivision agreement, removal of sidewalks. Andrew, you can go ahead. I'll let you know when you have one minute remaining.
Sure. Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this afternoon. I come here to represent Coventry Court residents as well as Oak Street and Simcoe. Simply as you put, requests for the removal of sidewalks on the frontage of both Coventry Court and Oak Street. Both streets are not throughways, they're quiet streets with cul-de-sacs, and so both residents of Coventry and Oak are in agreement, desire for there to be no sidewalk, a part of that subdivision. So that's simply the proposal and request. With no objection by the developer, I may add.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to the deputation? Counselor Huffman.
Thank you, Chair Martin. Through you to the deputation. How many... Sorry if I missed it at the beginning, I wasn't quite clear. How many homes does this affect?
So Coventry Court, my understanding affects three homes. And then on Oak Street, we have residents, approximately, I believe, nine residents. They're both small streets, Coventry and Oak.
Okay. And I just wanted to ask, what about accessibility issues for people who may live in these homes in the future?
Right, yeah, there doesn't appear to be any apparent accessibility issues. Like I said, quiet street, no obstructions that are in the way of accessibility, specifically on the area of Coventry Courts. There would still be a sidewalk, my understanding, on Driftwood leading to Coventry Court, which would also be in conjunction with... forgive me, I can't remember the other street name, Stone Ridge. As far as Oak Street, Oak Street immediately has a sidewalk already completed off of Oak, but there's, again, a quiet street, not a throughway on either road.
Okay. And so overall, what is your reason for not wanting sidewalks?
Just request, desire not to have one. It's no real need for it on the residence of the street, and as a whole out of Coventry, and from my understanding as well for residents of Oak Street.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any further questions to the deputation? Seeing none. May I have a motion to receive it as information? Counselor Taylor, seconded by Counselor Rabbits, all those in favor? Carrie, question, Counselor Columbus?
Again, Madam Chair, I think it's important to get some feedback from the Public Works Department with respect to this request.
Through you, Chair. I believe Jason Godby is in Committee Room A, and so certainly if the county wants... if committee wants a brief statement on the active transportation master plan and the requirement for sidewalks in there, he might be able to give it verbally right now.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Through the chair. I'm not sure... I can't quite see myself on our screen in here. I'm not sure if you can see me or hear me.
We can't see you, but we can hear you just fine.
All right, that's good enough for me. So, no, I would... it would be my recommendation that myself and Brandon from Development and Planning be able to have a bit of a chat about this. I see Brandon also is logged in here. I don't know if he has any immediate comments. However, it would be prudent for us to look at how this area does fit into the overall active transportation master plan that the county has, as well as specifically how Oak Street, yes, right now is not a throughway, but it is set up for future expansion. So we just would like the opportunity to maybe have a more thorough review of the overall implications of making a decision to remove or not remove these sidewalks.
Mayor, Mayor Chop, go ahead.
Is there a petition that went along with this, or is this just one individual that came forward?
I don't see a petition, Andrew. Is this just...
Not a petition, just a collective agreement of the residents of Coventry and Oak Street.
I guess my challenge is referring this back to staff right now. Andrew, I understand the challenges. I mean, there's a lot of people that wish not to have sidewalks, but it was also kind of a... I thought it was a high-level commitment of this council. In fact, we went and reversed the decision on Don John where there was active petitions against having a sidewalk there, and council seemed to make a decision that, no. I mean, unfortunately, that's the way of the future, comments like, you know, Counselor Huffman for accessibility purposes, while there may not be somebody that needs it today, that doesn't mean there won't be somebody that needs it tomorrow. So I'm just not really sure. I mean, unless council's looking at entertaining, you know, revisiting sidewalks here and not sidewalks there, and so on and so forth, I'm not really sure what referring it back to staff is meant to accomplish.
Well, the way I see this is that if we just receive it as information, there's really no action on this item, so where it goes, I don't know.
Well, after you refer it to staff, is there an interest on the part of council of, you know, taking these petitions on a case-by-case basis? I mean, you're either making a commitment to move into the future to say, you know, we're having sidewalks, or we're not having sidewalks. It's a piece from the developer as well. It's part of the agreement from Norfolk County that they must put these sidewalks in. What we heard even from previous councils and staff was that was a problem, correct me if I'm wrong, in the past, was that you guys had gone and said, okay, well, we're not going to do it here, we're not... and there was a regret of not saying to the developers because it was a cost that was then borne by the developers. Instead, when you have to put the sidewalks in years later, like on Don John, now it's become a cost of the taxpayer as opposed to the developer. So that's the challenge that you have to... and I...
So if it's left just to receive it as information, does that mean sidewalks are going in or sidewalks are being taken out? That's my question. To me, it's neither here nor there.
Jason Godby could correct me if I'm wrong, but it's Norfolk County's agreement that in any new development, they must install sidewalks.
Mr. Godby?
Through the chair to council, that is correct. It's my understanding that the subdivision agreement for this particular phase does include the installation of sidewalks in these areas as it currently stands. So pending any additional direction from council, we would be moving forward with sidewalks.
Thank you. Counselor Huffman and then Counselor Van Passen.
Thank you, Chair Martin. I just wanted to go on the record as saying I have no interest at all in revisiting this issue, and we need to move forward with the sidewalks and the plan that is in place for accessibility issues for active transportation and for the move forward with Norfolk County. So that's my point of view.
Thank you. Counselor Van Passen.
Would I be to add a question, or...
Technically, no, but sure.
Okay. Okay, so I'm just going to mention, specifically on Coventry Court, the sidewalk, I believe, affects three homes. Like, it only covers three lots. The rest of the cul-de-sac and the rest of the street is just frontage, no sidewalk. So I don't see what immediate impact that would have as far as accessibility. That's just my question.
Counselor Van Passen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's sort of been covered. We have this debate a few times, and the debate, in my mind, boils down to are sidewalks there for adjoining property owners or sidewalks there for the general public, for everybody in Norfolk County to be able to use? And it always seems to go back that it's for everybody, and I have no interest in dealing, and again, with a one-off from a few of the property owners who probably got beautiful landscaping there already and don't want to rip it up to replace it with a side dock after the fact, because it's always the last thing that gets put in there. So that's what all of our agreements call for, the developer to put the sidewalks in. I don't want to debate it now. I don't want to debate it again in a few years, and, you know, whether we don't put them in, somebody else will come back and want to install them later. Then it's going to be on our dime, not on the developer. So I would like to receive this as information and move on to the next item.
Okay. Any further comments from council members? We have already received it as information, so if there's nothing further, we will proceed to the next item. Okay, request to amend subdivision agreement, removal of sidewalks, Oak Street and Fay. If you're there and available to speak, you have five minutes, and I'll let you know when you have one minute remaining. Oh, Andrew, either you're muted or we've muted you if you're hoping to speak to this one as well.
Yeah, sorry, I apologize. I thought I mentioned at the beginning there that I was representing both Coventry Court and Oak Street, of which Fay would be a resident of Oak Street.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, if there is nothing further, we'll move along. Tom Klein, staff report PD 20-50. Tom, go ahead and begin your deputation, and I'll let you know when you have one minute remaining.
Can you hear me, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I circulated to two members of council a memorandum on September the 14th that pretty well outlines my concern about proposed bylaw number 4 OP 20. I really can't add too much to that memorandum, other than the fact that Brendan did send me through an amendment, a suggested amendment. He indicated in his correspondence that staff was still not prepared to accept the amendment or to recommend the amendment. That having been said, I think the council's intent was pretty clear when this matter came before council, and the suggested amendment that I made in my memorandum reflects council's intent as I understood it. And in fairness, the amendment that Brendan has proposed does reflect the intent of council, subject to... he's only left one word out on the purpose of the amendment. And I said in my memorandum, the purpose of the amendment is to ultimately permit the severance of two residential buildings, building lots from lands in currently designated agriculture in the Norfolk County official plan. And the amendment that Brendan proposes goes on and identifies that parcel now as rural, and accepting that, that would be in accord with what the application, in accord with I understood council's intent was, and in accord with the motions passed by council. Subject to that, I have no further comments, and prepared to answer any questions that council may have.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions of the deputation? Seeing none. May I have a motion to receive this as information? Counselor Michelli, seconded by Counselor Taylor, all of those in favor? And that's carried. Okay, I guess we'll just move along to that staff report, which is page 19 of the agenda. We'll jump ahead. Staff report PD 20-5019, supplemental information in relation to the request to amend the Norfolk County official plan to permit the severance of two residential building lots from existing farm parcels submitted by Abel and Emily Coopie and Agent Thomas A. Klein affecting lands described as 293 Wyndham Road 12. Staff, whenever you're ready.
Thank you through the chair. So this item briefly is some unfinished business that we are hoping to move forward with. Current staff are picking up some of the, to be honest, some of the bits and pieces from previous staff and work on this matter. I think we wanted to make sure that committee and council had the up-to-date information about moving forward with the signing of the amending official plan amendment bylaw for this property at 293 Wyndham Road 12. It's related to an official plan amendment, and there were some proposed changes, kind of late in the process, and staff have advised that from a professional opinion standpoint, it's difficult to support to go to rural lands designation. We are, to let you know, looking at the possibility of doing a more broader county-wide study, and that would help us with provincial policy statement conformity. But at this point in time, we just provided a four-information memo, as we know that we need to move forward with mayor and clerk signing it. Although not recommending to assist members of council and the deputation, should anything move forward, and to assist the clerk, we did provide some wording that at least would conform to the Norfolk County format of a bylaw, should you choose to direct, to sign the bylaw in that manner with rural lands. So I think with that, I'll leave it as for additional information, and whatever the direction of committee and council shall be, then we can move forward and close this matter. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Brandon. Are there any questions to staff respecting this report? Seeing none. Okay, this report is for information, so we will need a motion to receive it, and then we will allow further motions if council members have one ready. So a mover and seconder to receive the report as information. Counselor Van Passen? Counselor Huffman, all those in favor? Carrie? Back to committee. Does a member have a motion they wish to place before us for further debate? Counselor Van Passen, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I went back and checked my notes from a couple times that we had meetings on this, and I think the applicant's agent is correct that council's intent was to do a site-specific official plan amendment to declare that particular parcel as rural lands rather than agricultural. And through the discussion, I think everybody realizes that the provincial policy statements have very limited options for severances in agricultural zoned lands and/or things that are placed in agricultural through the official plan. And we discussed, like, we don't have the resources to do a lot-by-lot study of all of Norfolk County to find out which areas would be classed as rural lands as opposed to prime agricultural lands, which currently everything in Norfolk County is agricultural And we also recognize that there are little bits and pieces scattered throughout the county that are not prime agricultural land. They will never be useful for agriculture, but they do have other uses, and this is one way that we can get there with a site-specific designation of that particular parcel as rural lands, and that opens up the option. There are different possibilities of having a severance grants granted under the provincial policy statements to rural lands rather than agricultural lands. So if I could have to ask the... So, if I could have to ask the clerk on how to properly do this, but the bylaw, I think the, well, the proposed draft that the staff has sort of sent, and the one that the applicant's agent has in front of us through his deputation, how do we get that to be the official bylaw to amend our official plan for that site-specific change?
Through you, Chair Martin. So, I believe Brandon has sent around a draft motion that would bring forward the OP change. What we had in the past was we had the zoning bylaw. There was a zoning bylaw amendment circulated by Mr. Klein previously. So, planning has all the documents, and essentially whatever council and committee decides tonight will be worked upon and will come forward on next week's agenda.
I believe Brandon sent an email around with a potential wording change, but I don't have that in front of me, so that would be my little problem. But is that something that it could be prepared and brought forth at council next week for approval?
Why don't you take a look at the screen in front of you there, Councilor Van Passen? I think we've got something up.
I think it's more or less the same as the one in the additional information we got from Mr. Klein today, but other than that one word was missing, I think.
Yep, through the chair, I'm sharing the screen of what council may consider.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A request of this nature comes before council from time to time, and I recall the meeting we had, there was unanimous support at the council table with respect to moving forward on these rural lands. And so, being that there's a number of properties like this, and people on a continuous basis are always asking when this can happen, I think we should support it and send it to LPAT for a decision. The applicant is prepared to spend their money on this, even though they know that the risk that it may not be great on their side, but they do want an answer with respect to this land that they traditionally can't use really for progressive agriculture. So, I'd like to see it go to LPAT and see what happens. Thank you.
Andy, did you get some wording there, or no?
Sure, yeah, I've got essentially what Brandon put up there, that the amending bylaw be signed by the mayor and clerk for official plan amendment, OPN PL 2019-310, affecting lands described as 239 Wyndham Road 12, Norfolk County be approved as rural land as defined in the provincial policy statement. And then we'll also bring forward the zoning bylaw amendment next week, too. So, we'll do the OP and the zoning next week.
Councilor Van Passen, are you moving that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
And a seconder, Mayor Chop. Any further discussion? All in favor? Carried unanimously. All right, staff report, PW 20-4811, Booth Harbor recommendation. Mr. Godby?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to council, what we have here is staff report with respect to the longstanding issue, conversations we've been having back and forth about Booths Harbor and the privately-owned water system there. Essentially, to summarize, dating back into 2017, council had been approached by some residents of Booths Harbor with concerns about the drinking water system there. As a result, public works staff have been in conversation since that time, back and forth with the owner of the system, with some engineering staff. We've had a private engineering review done to provide us options that are available there. Most importantly, though, we note that we've had extensive conversation with MECP with regards to the operation of this private drinking water system. And ultimately, at the end of the day, based on our conversations with the owner of the system and the conversations with the MECP, it is staff's recommendation that Norfolk County proceed no further on this matter. Essentially, you know, the MECP is not concerned with the pressure or water quality within Booths Harbor development distribution system, and they are in compliance with all provincial acts and regulations. And to date, the owner is not expressing interest in turning the system over to Norfolk County for operation. So, to try and kind of close out this matter, it is our recommendation that this be received as information, and that staff take no further action on this matter.
Okay, thank you.
That being said, I will gladly accept any questions that you may have.
Okay, Mayor Chop.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jason, what was the reaction of the residents to MECP's findings? And was there letter sent to the residents?
Through the chair, to the mayor. I'm not exactly certain the communication that has gone out from MECP to the residents. I know the local drinking water inspector, not local, I mean local as in the one who looks after our Norfolk County municipal drinking water systems, is also the one who's been tasked with the review of the Booths Harbor system. So, he has been down during his investigations and talked with a lot of residents down there, as well as the owner. But as for any specific other communication that have gone to that, to those residents, I can't really comment on.
Well, I guess it leads into my next question, which is, I'm just kind of curious as to their reaction, or even what the MECP's maybe justifications could have been for some of the, you know, numerous complaints that came out of there in terms of water quality and so forth.
Through the chair, to the mayor. From MECP's point of view, every time they've been down, they went down, I believe it was in 2018, and there were some noted concerns by the MECP to the owner of the system. Those were brought to the owner, and since that time, they have addressed any of those compliance concerns or compliance issues. They have been doing semi-regular inspections, and by that I mean that more frequent than the typical schedule would be. And since 2019, the system has remained in full compliance with all of their rules and regulations. So, they've kind of taken the stance that there is no actual health or safety concern with the system and the manner that it's being operated.
Councilor Michelli.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jason, I'm wondering, with all of this regarding, you know, the communication, as Mayor Chop's been pointing out with the residents, I'm wondering if it might be appropriate and useful for staff to send out a summary or explanatory letter to each resident in Booths Harbor, so that they are, you know, fully aware of the reasons why this decision has been made.
Through the chair, to Councilor Michelli, I definitely, we can definitely support and do that. To the, on that point, I guess staff did not want to engage too heavily with the residents prior to this report being presented to council, but definitely going forward, we can work on providing them more detailed information and response to their concerns, likely in conjunction with some information from the MECP as well.
Jason, I think the residents there would really appreciate that. I do know that they are going to have some questions, and obviously, they will be, I mean relatively certain, disputing some of the findings of the MECP, but I think as long as we approach this with full disclosure and they have some information to work with, I think that would be very helpful. And Madam Chair, if I can add another question. Jason, in our, on page two of three of the report, or page 12 of our agenda, the second last paragraph indicates that the, that if Norfolk County were to take over this system, it would require a certain number of upgrades, which the dollar figure is printed in the report. But the very last sentence of that paragraph says that the cost of the system would be added to that upgrade. I just want to make it clear, and, you know, I think just for, you know, everyone's information, when it says the cost, are we referring to the possible purchase price if the owner had entertained selling it to us, or is that the cost of operating the system?
Through the chair, to Councilor Michelli, that's a very good point to bring up. What we are referring to there is that, yes, if we were to end up purchasing that system, there would be this cost of approximately $1.4 million required to upgrade it to our municipal standards. And then further to that, there would additionally be our regular, an increase in our regular annual operations and maintenance costs, just sheerly by the nature of taking on more infrastructure.
Thank you, Jason. So, then, again, just to be further clear, the cost refers to what you just described? It is not the potential negotiated price of a sale, should the owner decide to entertain a purchase price from the county?
Yes, through the chair, that is correct.
So, thank you, Jason. So, what we are looking at here is that cost, the cost of upgrade, and then the purchase price from the current owner. So, that figure is considerably larger than the $1.4 million that we have been describing. Thank you.
Mayor Chop.
While Councilor Michelli's on that topic, why are municipal standards so much less or greater rather than MECP standards? Why, if the water system is meeting MECP standards, is it $1.4 million to upgrade it to municipal standards, or Norfolk County standards?
Through the chair, to the mayor. Without really diving into any, the actual layout of this system, which, I mean, we can definitely do, I just need to get some of the engineering staff to bring forward some of the information. Essentially, what you're looking at is, we have a more of a municipal standard across all of our water systems, where we have specific newer pipe materials, the system layouts, the provision of fire hydrants in many cases, services, and a lot of that all comes down to where we are with our operations and maintenance aspect of things, making sure that the system is properly tight, so that we don't have unnecessary water loss through that. One of our challenges with some of these smaller systems that we have taken over in the past is, you know, we don't know where the actual lines really are. The infrastructure mapping is typically a little more lax than what we're used to. It is just the nature of the fact that due to the size and the number of residences that are served, there's typically a hierarchy of standards that goes, increases as you bring more people onto a connected system.
So, I guess my, just trying to go a little bit further, so since you're sitting next to our GM of planning, how do we ensure that in the future, if a development like this is being done, that it is already at municipal standards, so we don't run into this issue? Like, why wouldn't that have been done, I know you weren't there, Brandon, but why wouldn't that have been done at the time?
Yeah, through the chair, we can, I think it's important for public works and development engineering and planning to be as crystal clear as we can related to these matters when we're dealing with the new developments moving forward, and I think we may even, we have to think of it even more comprehensively, too, beyond just dealing with site-specific items like this. It sounds like this situation is inheriting it from the past.
Yeah, it just, it seems we keep having issues with, constantly with developments, with items not being completed, with standards not being met, et cetera, et cetera. So, that was just my point with that. Thanks.
Yeah, just a quick follow-up through the chair. We've had some discussion about what other moving-forward development standards we can put in, a little bit more on the development engineering side, so that's something that we are looking for our upcoming work program.
Councilor Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you, actually, Mayor Chop's last line of questioning just covered what I was going to ask, so good to go.
Councilor Columbus, then Mayor Chop.
Yes, Mike, question, Jason, is what did this R.B. Anderson study cost the county?
Through the chair, to Councilor Columbus, I do not have that figure handy with me. It is something that I can definitely find out for you. It was a council-directed study to do through this process, so I can easily have engineering staff pull that value for you, if you wish.
I'd say, though, irregardless, it's probably good money well spent with the answer we got. Thanks.
Mayor Chop.
Were we, I'm trying to do the math, were we here in July 2018? Is that previous council? So, what I'm confused about is this came forward about Booths Harbor to this council, and I remember us looking at, I think, the direction at the time, it was something like to direct our solicitor to go back and discuss with MECP or something. I don't ever recall mention of, I don't recall a mention of a study going on by R.B. Anderson at the time. Like, I also find it funny, it was awarded in July 2018, and it was completed in January of 2019, and we're now in September of 2020, when we're finding out about the study? Like, there's something about that doesn't make sense to me.
See, Councilor Michelli's nodding his head. Do you want to add something to that?
Thank you, Madam Chair, sorry. Yes, and the mayor's raising a good point there. There was a period of time there where there was a lot of confusion and misinformation among the residents in Booths Harbor, several communications about what the study was for, and frankly, there was a public information center held in St. Williams, at the community center there, you know, subsequent to its release. And I attended that session, and I do have to admit that through all of the information, I think that people sought was not made available to them at that time.
Mayor Chop.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess, Jason, R.B. Anderson does a lot of work for us at the county, and so my concerns are, number one, why this council at the time of the last report on Booths Harbor, many, 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 many months ago, why, one, we were never informed of a study actually being awarded to R.B. Anderson prior to this council. Two, why it would take them more than six months to actually do their study, and why it's taken nearly, it was eight months, nine months, to actually tell council about the results of the study. So, I think this just goes to, when we're looking at, on a procurement side, like, when are we going to start rating kind of the quality of the work that we're getting out of, you know, some of these engineers? I could look at Councilor Columbus and say, you know, look at the Delhi project and how that has gone. How do we ensure that, you know, when we're looking at awarding, maybe it's a better question for Shelley, awarding jobs, that we're not hiring guys that are taking eight months to bring a report forward to council and six months to do what should be a pretty simple job, I would think?
Through the Chair to the Mayor, I'll take a first crack at it here from our Public Works perspective, and then Shelley may have something to add. All I can say is that I understand the concern. I share many of these concerns. And from that perspective, it has been direction provided to Public Works staff specifically. It's contained within our purchasing policy and procedures that we need to be significantly more diligent on our vendor performance process, which is essentially at the end of any of these procurements, at the end of any of these studies, when they are complete, that staff need to do a better job of documenting any issues and concerns so that we have that documentation going forward for when bids come in on future work, that we are in a better position to perhaps dispute or disqualify contractors who are not meeting our performance standards. I'm not sure if Shelley had anything else to add or...
If I could jump in just before Shelley speaks, you said staff doing a better job of vendor performance. Are you saying then that actually has been done in the past? Because I don't think it has.
Through the Chair to the Mayor, I can say that the instances of it being completed are, were very rare.
Okay. So in 20 years in Norfolk County, we haven't actually been analyzing the performance of many of these vendors that leave us with projects like Delhi, the King Street reconstruction.
Shelley, if you have anything to add, you can go ahead. And then I think Mr. Burgess will chime in as well.
Thank you, Chairman, and through to the Mayor. Mr. Godby has outlined the requirements that are contained in the purchasing policies and procedures. He's outlined some performance management pieces that he is trying to stay on top of now in the Public Works Department. We have had vendor performance requirements in the purchasing policy for decades. We have some areas that are very good at completing the requirements for vendor performance because as Mr. Godby has alluded to, without the proper documentation and follow-up for correction, we are challenged with their suspension processes. So I believe with the streamlining of procurement in certain areas of the organization and more globally across the corporation, I think we'll see a substantial cleanup in vendor performance. I did want to also acknowledge that it doesn't just occur at the end of the process, that it should be occurring throughout the contract term. So this is all very good discussion and feedback. And I'm sure Mr. Burgess will provide some further context and will bring this back to our senior leadership team and our procurement team to work with the department representatives.
Mr. Burgess?
Thank you. Through the Chair to the Mayor and to Council. Vendor management is something that a lot of organizations and other municipalities struggle with. It does take significant time and effort to do it. It can be effective. And as Ms. Darlington had pointed out, it's not something that you just do at the end. It's something that you need to work through the whole process. The challenge is normally one of human resources. We, our project managers balance a lot of projects. And this is one of the things that gets left to the end and is not, you know, not focused on. In more mature organizations with the appropriate resources, past vendor performance actually gets factored into the procurement process and how they get scored. So it is something that, you know, I'm sure the teams would like to do more of, and it's something that we'll try to prioritize. It's something that we could take a look at, frankly, with larger projects. If Council remembers, one of the things we did do with two of the most recent large water projects is we did a peer review on the design work. And that's one method to, you know, ensure that the quality of work that we are getting is beneficial. It's not a pure vendor management type of strategy, but it is a bit of a risk mitigation strategy on that. So the points are very valid. It is something that we should be doing. Like everything else, it's time and money to some extent that we need to look at how we prioritize items.
Mayor Chop.
Well, I guess it's maybe, you know, I understand there's a time factor on all projects, but we've had some pretty big ones since this council's been in here that have not gone well. I can think of the other one in Simcoe, I can't remember the road off the top of my head. Holden, Holden Ave. You know, there's another one. Like, where is the review of that construction company and the time? Like, I just can't, the staff resources, you know, and time, the council time that we spent answering countless emails and phone calls of complaints and, you know, it's just, it mounts up. So at a certain point, when does the construction company get held accountable for some of this stuff and ensuring that we're not dealing? Either they rectify the issue or we're not hiring them again. Like, maybe it's not on every single project, but we've had some pretty significant ones that, you know, I think that the tax being public hasn't had an answer as to, you know, even really what happened in Delhi, you know? How did we get to that point? I know there's some issues on the staff side as well, but, you know, at a certain point, like, the loss of time and resources on, again, on both council and staff side, it just, somehow, that has to stop.
Yeah, thank you. Through the Chair, these are good questions. And I appreciate the fact that the mayor did point out, sometimes it's not always the contractor. In many cases, you know, there might be other issues. There might be unforeseen conditions that neither staff nor the contractor could reasonably determine on it. And in some cases, it could be, you know, staff not doing their job of it. I think, you know, I just want to make sure that there's a bit of a separation when you're looking at vendor management. Vendor management is a tool that ensures that the vendors are performing as they should and making sure that good quality vendors are being retained by, being retained by this council. To be effective, you know, I've been on both sides of it. I've been on the procurement side, I've been on the vending side, on the vendor side. And in some cases, as a vendor, it gets back to price and value. And in some cases, when you're doing tendering, when it's all 100% related to cost, you could be a great vendor with a great track record, but that doesn't factor into how you make the award. And so it's a much bigger issue to deal with. And that's something staff can go away and see how, there's different companies that deal with it differently. I think the specific issue on having those project debriefs to provide the answers to council on things like, you know, frankly, Counselor Columbus's Delhi Street, which I'm sure filled up his email box. You know, I think that's a fair request for that, for some of these more significant projects, that we do provide council with a debrief and be honest with what went wrong on our side and what went wrong on maybe the vendor's side and look for some of those corrections. So I think that's something I'll take away to SLT. Maybe we can target a few of those. And I think if you're transparent about some of those issues, it can motivate everyone to lead to, you know, some of those changes. So we'll take that back from, to SLT. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? Okay, not seeing any on my correct page here. So on page 13 of the agenda, we have the staff recommendation. Does someone wish to move that or present an alternative? Mayor Chop and Counselor Michele moving the printed? Okay. Any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor? And that's carried. Okay, before we move along to the next staff report, I've been informed that our second deputation for the sidewalk, Fay, was cut off and wishes to speak. She's on the line, so we're going to switch gears and give her five minutes to present. Fay, you can go ahead. I'll let you know when you have one minute remaining.
Great. And thank you, Council, for accepting me back. I did try to, yes, I did try to get in on the conversation. Due with the families that are on the side, in the subdivision, these families that have approached me, they actually were families with children, and they were the ones that were opposed of the sidewalk. I had gone all the way down to Driftwood where it crosses. And the woman who lives on the corner, she had said the same thing, that she was opposing not to have the sidewalk because, like I say, it's a dead-end street, more or less right now. There was some sewer issues with the building on the subdivision on this side, that all our sewer lines were quite, coming into the homes were quite high. And when they got down to the street, the house number 10 lot was even higher. So we did find out that there was some issues at the end, and they weren't sure that what kind of development was going to go through to the other side or the remaining of the street. And the sidewalk is going to end at lot number nine, which is at the top. And there is a lot number 10, he won't get the sidewalk, but those people who are in lot nine, they will get half of the sidewalk to their lawn. The other thing is that there was a lot of snowbirds and elderly people on our street retired. And they were opting out of the sidewalk because they will not be able to, as what they say, is they, when it comes to the shoveling and keeping it iced. So really, the sidewalks, people will just more or less use it to go up, stop at the nice lot and turn around and come back down. There was some issues with the development of the field further up, and it, we were told that it was going to be a quite costly development and that they weren't sure they had what they were going to do. So we were trying, hoping that to further look into it. Opposing us to have a sidewalk that is maybe, you know, 10 years down the road, that because someone has taken on the development and the cost of what they would have to do to develop further into the field there, that I'm sure that they would not oppose if it had to be put in. But I know just for now that all the nine residents who are opting and want to opt out of having that sidewalk put in. So that's what the residents in Oakville or Oak Street were hoping for that not to happen. Also, they, a lot of them had two or three cars as well, some of them, so they would be parking on the street with their cars. And there was just a lot of them had wished not to have it.
Okay, Fay, thank you very much. Any final questions on this subject, the deputation? Seeing none, may have a motion to receive it as information. Counselor Rabbit, seconded by Counselor Taylor. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you, Fay.
Thank you very much. Let me speak. Thank you.
Staff report, B, PW 20-4915 intersection safety Thompson Road East at Cockshut Road. Mr. Godby?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to committee. What we have here is a staff recommendation with respect to the intersection of Thompson Road East at Cockshut Road. A little back history on this is, I'm sure many of you are aware, it's been an intersection that's had a long history of traffic incidents. As a result, there's been numerous presentations and deputations to the Road Safety Committee, to Police Services Board, to council with regards to what can be done to improve the situation at this intersection. As a result of that, staff had engaged IBI group to do a, who are traffic engineers, to do a thorough review, including collision history, traffic volumes, turning movements, the site lines, road geometry, signage, lane markings, and the general roadside environment. As a result of that study, they basically came up with three alternatives out of that report being option one, to do nothing, option two, to install traffic signals, and option three, to construct a roundabout. As part of this review, they took a thorough look at costs associated with each of these options, with the ultimate recommendation being that it was the traffic engineer's opinion that the best thing for this intersection would be for the installation of a roundabout. Recognizing that this, staff had done some preliminary investigation of what we could do within that intersection for the installation of a roundabout. They identified right off the hop some concerns with the local stormwater management and with the actual, having the physical area that, of road allowance within this intersection in order to fit a roundabout in. So as a result, we're here today basically looking at, in conjunction with the recent road resurfacing program that was just done on Thompson Road East through this intersection, staff are here to recommend that we install a four-way stop at this intersection. In conjunction with that, we have the flashing solar beacons, oversized stop signs on both sides, and a 60-kilometer-an-hour speed reduction on the approaches, on all four approaches of this intersection, basically starting out one kilometer from the intersection. When we discussed this at our, with our Road Safety Committee, and there's comments from some of the officers, some of the OPP officers that we typically deal with, it's been felt that this is a good immediate improvement that we can do at this intersection, that overall it will improve the overall safety of the intersection. No, it is not fully in line with the IBI report. However, we are recommending these changes be made as an immediate action. And that will allow us to receive a little feedback from council on whether we would want to continue to pursue the installation of a roundabout, recognizing that it is, it will be in and around or in excess of a $1 million capital expense in order to do this. The other option with traffic signals, I believe was in the magnitude of $300,000 to $400,000 by the time you get servicing out there for hydro and everything else that needs to be done in order to install proper traffic signals. So for the purposes of today, I guess what we're looking for is authorization to establish the always-stop condition at this intersection, as well as the associated speed reductions. And then we will continue to monitor the effectiveness of this strategy and take a look at that through our Road Safety Committee as being one of the initiating bodies to track and monitor this location. And then come back at a later date, should we deem more, a higher level of engineering solution to be required.
Okay, thanks, Jason. Mayor Chop?
Thanks, Madam Chair. First question was, I don't recall there being a motion from council to direct a study on that road. Am I wrong? I thought we had talked about line painting, changing it to a solid line. It was from previous council for a study as well? Wow, these are two years old, both of them. So this is a two-year-old study from which company now? From IBI Group. So also something that was never raised in all of those discussions that we had at Thompson Road and Cockshut, at least I don't recall there ever being mentioned of a background study being done at the time, because I'm sure we would have told the public about that. We just talked about painting lines. The second... The second thing is, I find it strange that we're immediately going to a roundabout when, at the top of page 16, and you partly answered my question, Jason, which was, traffic signals would cost $300,000 to $400,000, a roundabout would cost $1 million, and the top of page two, it says, installation of traffic signals at the intersection was also explored, however, the existing traffic patterns do not fully warrant the establishment of a signalized intersection. So it does not fully warrant the outlay of $300,000 to $400,000, but it may warrant the outlay of $1 million? I'm confused.
Through the chair to the mayor, you are correct. Through IBI's report, they did note that, based on the volumes and turning movements and everything of traffic at that intersection, it did not meet the warrants for a fully signalized intersection, just because essentially, signalized intersections are intended for a mildly different purpose than a roundabout, just based on volumes throughout the day, concentrations of traffic throughout the day. It's not surely just on counts, but it also is used to control certain peak times where traffic patterns may be different. So that is the one thing with that. Just as a comment, you are correct, this is an older report that, to be perfectly blunt, was found, stashed away in one of the offices after some of the considerable staffing turnover that has happened in Public Works over the past. So that is one, the reason why there's been this significant delay. It was staff, current staff, who recognized that this, there was more conversations happening with this council about this particular intersection, which led to some conversations, basically, which got us to dig deeper to find some of these reports, and now bring it forward.
Counselor Huffman? Okay, Counselor Michele.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jason, just sort of to cut through all that a little bit, the primary reason for this report is that there was an inordinate amount of accidents occurring at that intersection. So we've got the various options here. We are, the report recommends we go to trying and always stop, considering the cost of the lights and the cost of the roundabout. If the always-stop with reduced speed limits achieves the goal of reducing accidents significantly, why wouldn't we just keep it at that?
Through the chair to Counselor Michele, that is essentially some of the thought process of staff as well. We know that we can, we have the support of our engineering team, and of the Road Safety Committee, and the OPP, and the PSB, that are, we're all in agreement that, at the very least, this is an immediate measure which we can achieve within the next week of having this always-stop condition installed, so that we have an immediate effect on the road safety of this intersection.
Thank you, Jason.
Counselor Van Passen?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I noticed the very first budget we did, when we were first elected, there was a line item in the capital budget for a roundabout at this intersection, and I thought about it then, and I would think about the same today. I cannot think of an intersection anywhere in Norfolk County that is worse suited to a roundabout than that particular intersection. You have the hill on one side where you, well, the county leveled it, but not quite enough a few years ago, but the one side has got the hill. The other side of the road is an area that is prone to flooding, and it's probably an extension to a provincially significant wetland, and to get permits to fill any of that in, you'd probably be waiting another 10 years. You'd have to expropriate part of somebody's lawn because there's not enough property on the southwest corner. You're going to take, have to expropriate property the other side, and just the sheer thought of putting a roundabout at that intersection just boggled my mind. So I hope that maybe the, you know, quick, easy fix of the four-way stop, as staff are suggesting, will solve the safety issues that, and concerns that the neighborhood has there, and we can just get the idea of a roundabout out of our heads and delete it from the capital forecast and never see it reappear again.
Counselor Columbus, Mayor Chop, then Counselor Huffman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And yes, $1 million for a roundabout versus eight posts and eight signs and some solar beacons, I guess it is, really makes sense to go with that. What we heard from Jason was it's a real quick fix, can probably have it in in a few weeks, and it's probably $50,000 or $60,000, we'll cover that. Just makes common sense, and I will move the recommendation as printed on pages 17 and 18. Thank you.
You're seconding that, Counselor Van Passen? Okay, Mayor Chop, and then Counselor Huffman.
I'll support that recommendation as well. I think that it's silly to install something and then still also consider a roundabout on top of it right now to be looking in the 2021-2030 capital plan until we know whether or not that's been effective and reduced collisions. So I don't really see that as being on the table right now. The only reason I agree with Counselor Van Passen in terms of the characteristics of that road as well, and the suitability of a roundabout, the only thing that I could possibly to do set of that would be that it would be another job for another consulting group to design the roundabout. So I guess my third point, and this wouldn't be related to the motion itself, but I would be curious as to how many other reports from previous council that were RFP'd or single-sourced out to some of these groups are still remaining, because if the work hasn't begun, I'd like to have a review of them, so that we're not continuing to do work from, that are two years old and nobody even remembers the direction.
I'll start, and I'll have Mr. Godby take care of it. I will say one thing, at least, you know, you're getting the unvarnished truth from staff when they say that they could have made up some more politically sensitive phrasing to, we found this one. So I will, I will say that, I will say that. I think there are some risks with a few files. I don't, I don't believe, I know Planning had done a very thorough review of all open files, that was a big one. Corporate Services is fine. I'll leave Mr. Godby to comment on anything else outstanding from Public Works, but there, you know, there was some attempt to, you know, to get a handle on all the current in-flight projects, but I'll let Mr. Godby comment.
Yes, thank you, through the chair, to the mayor. I guess first off, I just will see, note that staff will take no further action on anything to do with the roundabout at this time, just so we are clear on that. With respect to some of these other ongoing things, if you recall, there was, our regular council action items list did have a lot of intersection and traffic-related matters that were on there, some of these dating back, you know, two years, and certain ones had had, had been getting looked into, some we, like, such as this report, we did have results. I guess, really, for the lack of a better explanation, we're looking at a fact of, with some of the vacancies that we did have in our engineering group, that some of these things did have an excessively long leg time for us to be bringing these matters back. That being said, since June of this year, we do have our new Director of Engineering in place, Mike King, who's come to us with a great amount of practical municipal engineering experience, and Mr. King and I have been trying to work through and to find any of these old matters, so that we can finally get them put to bed. That being said, we're not actively engaging other traffic engineers or anything like that on matters at this point. What we are doing is taking a comprehensive look at everything that we've had backlogged, and trying to clear up that backlog and keep moving things forward.
Thanks, Jason. I hope you know, well, both Jasons, I realize that this was, you were not the head of Public Works in July of 2018, and for much of this council's actually tenure. So I do appreciate very much staff bringing forward these reports and being honest as to what happened. It certainly wasn't a dig at yourself, it was more to highlight the fact that when people continuously criticize this council, and myself in particular, as to changes that we've made in personnel in this organization, there is a reason, once again. So recall the million dollars, multi-millions of dollars that we've put in write-offs recently, the reports that are a couple of years old, that are just coming forward with no mention of them at all of the meetings, when we went, the first meeting on Thompson Drive, I remember there was a deputation, and we went around and around in circles, and no mention from the then-head of Public Works as to this, you know, existing study in the background. So that was just more of my point. Thanks for bringing it forward, much appreciated.
Counselor Huffman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jason, if you could just confirm for me the cost of the stop signs, the four-way stop, and an actual timeline as to when this project will be completed?
Through the chair to Counselor Huffman. As for a cost, I don't have it right off the top of my head here, but by, we purchased the solar beacons, they are already in stock, standard road signs, and the oversized stop signs. I believe we're in the ballpark of approximately $10,000, which has been, the plan was to charge that directly to our existing capital reconstruction project for Thompson Road East, as part of that project, being that that project was, did come in well under budget. So that is the case there. I believe Andy could speak to the fact that the bylaws, as soon as the bylaw is authorizing us to install the signage and establish that as an always-stop, our complete staff could likely be able to have the installation work done within a day or two.
Okay, thank you very much, and the residents of Ward 7 appreciate it.
Andy's nodding his head at those comments. Oh, Counselor Van Passen, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I think I have to come to defensive staff once in a while, but it's not just lost files. Concession A has been without a bridge for 13 years, because nobody could ever make a clear decision on what to do with it. Marburg's been 11 years. That's one point. We're waiting again on the bridge on 45 for a year and a half to get an environmental assessment approved by higher-up jurisdictions. The causeway is still up in the air. How long has it been trying to get environmental approvals? Like, I think the sign is going to rot out before we run out of dates to change the completion date on that one. So yeah, you know, it's a lot of different factors, and a lot of things are, were overlooked, pushed back, and all that for different reasons. This year, we've pushed back a bunch of projects, again, because of budget reallocation due to the whole COVID situation. So, you know, these do pop up, that's been laying on somebody's desk for too long, and it shouldn't have, but we can't blame everything on that same reason, there's more to it than that.
I have a question, Mr. Godby. You mentioned a couple of times Road Safety Committee, and you spoke about deputations to Road Safety Committee and Police Service Board. How do council members get on the agenda of the Road Safety Committee? I don't honestly, quite honestly, think I've heard about this particular committee reviewing projects before.
To you, Madam Chair, the Norfolk County Road Safety Committee is an internal committee of council, it's basically, sorry, a committee of staff, it is not a committee of council. Essentially, it is comprised of some of our members of legal and risk management, Public Works, roads and engineering, as well as the OPP have a representative on there, and it is something that we meet, we strive to meet quarterly in order to just kind of have that initial staff interaction between the OPP and Public Works and our risk management folks, so that we can discuss any of these types of issues. Like, as for some of our conversations, the Road Safety Committee will perform some of their speed studies, five studies, they will feed us with accident statistics to our engineering groups, so we can do reviews of these things. We have recently met, I'm going to say it was about a week ago, where we're looking to get onto more of a formalized schedule and do a bit more communication outwards to the public as well, that if there are some concerns relating to road safety, that rather than looking at an email blast to counselors or specific staff or anything, that we can get these referred to the committee, so that they can be logged and categorized and be put on agendas, so that they can be tracked, and we can get some action and response to all these matters. That is something that we're work for, we're working on right now, and we'll be looking to have some of that information coming out in the near future.
So can council members send you information with public concerns? Like, there are, how does the deputation aspect work? How, are we just supposed to keep you and Shelley, I guess, involved on complaints and speed complaints and so on? Or how do you, how do you get an area of concern under review for that committee?
To you, Madam Chair, Shelley and I were both involved in the meeting that we had, and we're just working on finalizing out some of those logistics of how we can get a common, single point of contact for the public, or for council, or for staff, for the OPP, to bring these matters forward. And Shelley and I are actively working on getting that ironed out, so that we can get it, get it communicated out to everyone.
Okay, I think from my perspective, that would be very helpful. I find that I hit dead ends with a lot of these complaints. I share them with Police Service Board, but nothing really materializes, so I think this might be another helpful option to put things under review and have some kind of layer of accountability for these concerns. Counselor Huffman, then Counselor Columbus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You kind of mentioned what I wanted to speak about. Typically, I send the complaints from constituents to the PSB. I've had good results with the information getting forwarded and getting responses back. So is that information that we send to the PSB, does that go directly to this committee that you're speaking of, Jason?
Through the chair to Counselor Huffman, essentially, what we're looking at is, there is OPP representation on our Road Safety Committee, so we have, through our conversations, typically, if a matter gets brought to the PSB, it'll also be brought up at one of our committee meetings.
Thank you.
Counselor Columbus?
Yes, as a member of the PSB, I recall a few of these that whereby we've had deputations, for example, the St. John's Road, Cockshut Road, or Blue Line intersection, and I believe that one went to the Road Safety Committee, and then there was James Street in Delhi, where there's many accidents and a great deal of speeding. So that one's under review, and they do come forward from time to time, PSB does send them on to the Road Safety Committee.
Okay, thanks. Seeing no further comments, there is a recommendation, it's already been moved by Counselor Van Passen, Counselor Columbus, and seconded by Counselor Van Passen, thank you. So if there aren't any further comments or questions, we'll call the vote, all in favor, and that's carried. Staff report CS 20-25, summary of bid awards for the period ending August 25, 2020. And Shelley, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Chair Martin. This is a summary report with only one bid award request for council's review and consideration to date. As previously noted in the summary reports, the bid results identified in this request have been developed and issued in accordance with Norfolk County purchasing policy and procedures. And the recommended bidder has been proposed on the basis of having submitted the lowest complaint bid that meets the minimum specification. Staff are seeking approval this evening for the respective general manager to execute a contract with the successful bidder, master and electric for the LED lighting retrofits at various county facilities project. A detailed summary of the request has been outlined in attachment A to the report, and we will assist with any questions that committee may have.
Thank you. Any questions to staff? Seeing none. Okay, there's a recommendation on page 27 of the agenda. Does anyone wish to move that or present an alternative? Counselor Rabbit, seconded by Counselor Taylor. And all in favor? And that's carried. Thanks, Shelley. Staff report CS 20-2629, update on 2020 market debt issuance. And Shelley.
Thank you, Counselor, or Chair Martin. I'm going to pass this report to Tyler Wayne, who prepared, and will present the report this evening for committee.
Thank you, Shelley. So just briefly, this is an update mostly on the 2020 market debt issuance. Just quickly touching base on the IO, we received a rate offer today from them. So we've locked in a 20-year rate of 1.94%, which is below the 2% we were targeting when we came to you back in July. Final debenture documents will come next week for sign-off on that, at which time we'll get $9.3 million advanced to us on October 1. Coming back to this report and the 2020 debt issuance, this report serves to agree to the parameters for which our fiscal agent can proceed and actually secure the deal. So based on last week, we took a look at the market, and he has come forward with a 1.42% blended rate. If you look at attachment 1, you will see the yield curve over the 10 years and the repayment schedule. This is subject to change. Obviously, it's an open market dynamic. What we agreed was plus or minus 25 basis points. At this time, because the Bank of Canada announced September 9th, we waited to prepare the report after that, we don't see it dropping. They reconfirmed the rate. If there was some, we don't think that we will need the full 25 basis points, so for simplicity, 1.67% or less. We don't expect we would need that, but if something came out about a potential vaccine or some big change in the market, it could create more confidence in increase. So what we agreed to come forward to get authorization on is any rate 1.67% or lower that they can lock in, but we obviously are targeting a 1.42% or around that. We don't expect to need much more. It moves a few basis points each week. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but ultimately, we're just seeking the approval for a 1.67% or less, but targeting a 1.42% blended rate.
Okay, thanks, Tyler. Are there any questions to staff? Okay, there's a recommendation printed on page 30 and 31 of the agenda. Does anyone wish to move that or present an alternative? Counselor Michelle Lee? Counselor Rabbits? No further discussion? All in favor? And those opposed? I missed that. Okay, carried. Five, 10-minute break before we move to the next report? Okay, it is 4:34.
2019, Norfolk County purchased the lands at 682 Ireland Road in Simcoe for the purpose of the future location of the All Norfolk Community Center for a purchase price of $3,239,000. The agreement of purchase and sale included a right to the county to sell and this is what we refer to as the put right, to the original owners at the same agreed upon price on or before, and this is the important date, June 30th, 2021. Additionally, on October 9th of 2019 Norfolk County entered into an agreement of purchase and sale for 8.08 acre portion of lands located at 227 Deco Road in Simcoe, and that's immediately adjacent to the west of the hub lands. The purchase price of this parcel is $2,020,000 with the county only submitting a deposit of $111,000 to be held in trust in the deposit holder's interest-bearing trust account pending completion or other termination of the agreement. Again, this agreement is conditional until June 30th, 2021. As council and the public does know, the county received notice on August 7th, 2020 that the county was not successful in receiving the federal and provincial funding approval. With that in mind, council can consider potential options for each of the properties, and I'll ask Ms. Harrison to briefly provide an overview of each of those options.
Thank you, Shelley. With respect to 682 Ireland Road, Simcoe, option 1A would be to exercise the put right. Option 1B would be to continue to evaluate. Option 1C would be to keep the land. And option 1D, extend the time period for the right. The report did also include some detailed appraisal information, which was attached as a summary information memo for council's consideration. With respect to the portion of 227 Deco Road in Simcoe, which is the auction land, the options there would be 2A to request the return of the monies, 2B to continue to evaluate, 2C would be to keep the lands, and 2D to extend the time period for the condition. Staff has sufficient time to evaluate other options without material cost to the county, and staff are therefore recommending that council delay in taking any action and allow staff to explore extracting more value for the land. And with that, staff will take any questions that council may have.
Thank you. Questions from council to staff? Counselor Huffman?
Thank you, Chair Martin. My first question is just looking at the dates where there was the August 7th, you said we received notice that the hub was not approved, but I don't recall getting notification then. Why was there a delay in the notification to council about the hub application not being successful?
I think Andy has an answer for that. Go ahead, Andy.
This, I have to give my apologies to committee on this one. This was entirely my error. It came into my email alone here at the county. I was away on vacation at the time. I didn't identify it until August 24th, actually, when I was going through, so the delay is entirely my fault.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarification.
Counselor Columbus?
Well, Madam Chair, I was prepared to move a recommendation, and that is to exercise the put right of 1A and 2A. So that is on the floor. For a second.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Huffman. Counselor Michelle, do you have something to add? Or you, okay, go ahead, Counselor Columbus.
Could I speak to that? I cannot support any staff recommendation option other than 1A and 2A. That is what council promised the residents and taxpayers of Norfolk County. It's been reported several times, video documented by all of council, that if federal provincial dollars were not available, were not coming forth, the hub project was dead, and the potential sale would reverse, as documented in the agreement of purchase and sale. Reversing the sale was also committed to at the Mass Public Meeting held months ago at the Latham Community Center. How can this county sell fully serviced land in the Simcoe Judd Industrial Park recently for somewhere in the order of $26,000 per acre and now expect to use taxpayers' money to pay $135,000 per acre for 24 acres and $250,000 per acre for eight acres for unserviced land? Things just aren't adding up here. Like I have heard from several constituents today that sometimes something smells of this land deal. Let's reinstate some public accountability, some confidence and credibility for this elected body. I've heard talk of county developing these lands. Norfolk County's track record is not good at developing land. Leave that to the professional developers. I agree Norfolk is in immediate need of more affordable housing, but not in this location as the lands are zone industrial employment lands and a distance away from residential amenities. With respect to the need for an affordable housing, I and others agree, we are 60% shareholder in the Hall of Norfolk Housing Corporation, which holds $80 million in housing assets. We, the council, must work directly, hand in hand, right quick, with the housing corporation for badly needed affordable housing to happen. This whole hub deal has been painful process for council and Norfolk residents. As this Norfolk council promised, let's get the $3.2 million back as soon as possible in immediate need and like, for example, a badly needed water supply to permit development port over. At the least, let's get the money back. The county is losing tens of thousands of dollars in interest alone over the course of the year. Thank you, and I do have a question here in this one report that we received from staff.
Why do we keep doing this? If there's questions for staff, it should be before the motion has been moved. Otherwise, it goes to debate. And I think that there is a lot of questions that council still could have asked, but you chose to move the motion first, at which point it actually technically, under the procedural rules of order, each counselor gets the opportunity to speak twice to the motion. The questions are unlimited, but that is prior to the motion being moved. I know you've sat around this table for a long time, but this is why our meetings keep going till 10 o'clock at night, and this is why we can't move forward with things.
That's fine. I'll make my comments later with respect to this document. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mayor Chop?
I will not be supporting the motion, not because I'm not interested in potentially supporting it down the road, but because I have further questions of staff that I would like to ask. I know that council has also had questions about a meeting, the rumors that Mr. Burgess and I had with the developers back on July 10th, and I'm certainly prepared, if council would be willing to move the motion, to hear an open session as to, as to the, what took place at that meeting. Technically, probably should be enclosed, but again, if council would like to move to have that heard and open, I'm fine with that. But in order to proceed based on the way that this process just took, Madam Chair, I believe that we have to deal with the motion at hand, and if the motion fails, then we can go back to the floor to perhaps ask some further questions of staff.
Okay, our advice is that we will move along to debate the motion. If there are questions specific to the motion, which I think must be related directly to exercising the put option, then those questions will be permitted. Otherwise, they will not be permitted. Counselor Van Passen, something to add?
Well, some comments on the motion on the floor. I have dwelled on this because simply from a moral perspective, I can agree with the motion on the floor to return the property because the value of this property is much higher than what we paid for it. The mayor was able to negotiate the price down considerably, and I'm sure that the developers we bought the land from knew that if the hub were built there, that would increase the value of the remainder of the lands immensely, and they were willing to give the county a good deal. But from simple moral grounds, if we're not going through with our part of the bargain of building the hub, then we should return the land and get our money back and move on with the situation and go from there. And I also question whether we have any choice because my recollection of some verbiage in a schedule on the offer of purchase and sale was that if we were successful in acquiring the funding from the federal and provincial governments, that we had 30 days beyond that point to invoke the put option and failing that no later than July 21st or July 30th, 2021. But if we didn't get the money, I don't think we have the option of not giving it back. So since that's the motion on the floor, I think from moral grounds, it's just the right thing to do, so thank you.
Counselor Michelle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I want to add to Counselor Van Passen's comments, and I think I really want to speak today about the advocating for the people of the western side of Norfolk. I don't think it's any secret that the people in the constituents of the west part of Norfolk have never been big fans of the hub, and I would say that for at least the last 14 months, constantly being asked and always have given the same response that I believed was accurate and true, which I today also believe to be accurate and true, that if we do not get the federal and provincial funding, that money is going to come right back. And that's a very straightforward thing. It's, it's, it's a very simple approach that I think everyone will understand. You know, we, we have, we have options that, unfortunately, I agree with the mayor, I would have liked to have had the opportunity to ask staff about some of those options in more detail. But in any event, the hub is over. You know, the mayor and our staff did very well to get us here, and at the same time, you know, the good thing is, from the point of view of, again, I'm speaking for people in the west, we have not lost anything except some time. And please, you know, let's just go simply back, and Counselor Van Passen is quite right. This is some kind of a moral issue here. You know, we, we, in a way, we kind of, we broke even. I don't want people to think that we, that we broke even at blackjack, and now we're just going to move to the roulette table. That money is taxpayer money that was told to them, would return to them if there was no hub. There is no hub, and that's the commitment that we made to them, and we need to keep. Thank you.
Counselor Huffman and then, oh, sorry, Mayor Chop and then Counselor Huffman.
Okay, first a couple of questions related to this, to the put option. Just to be perfectly clear, because two counselors have talked about the money coming back to Norfolk County, even the quote in the Simcoe reformer, while it was quoted accurately, I don't believe it was well reflected. Could Mr. Burgess please answer how exactly this was funded? Is this money that's coming back into our piggy bank? Is this, can this be redeployed money to other assets? Was this money that previously councils had budgeted for? Because the last amount that I recall that was actually budgeted and paid for by the taxpayers on their levy was a million dollars, but it was 3.3. So where'd the extra 2.3 come from?
Through the chair, and I'll have, I believe, Ms. LaPlante, our treasurer, is in, in the room. The, the additional money would have been put into, the additional cost, because the original budget, I believe, was only for a million dollars for the land purchase. We obviously purchased more than that. It was taken out of existing cash flow at this point in time pending the announcement of the funding. And in this case, and because we're in a net deficit position, in theory, even though we took it out of the bank, we actually owe more debt than we have. So in theory, it's just debt that we have secured against this. And just to make a technical correction, it is not a break even process. We have already spent money to date on this property.
That was my next one, my next point I was getting to.
Oh, sorry, I was just correcting the one comment. I apologize.
Sorry, go ahead. That was going to be my next question, because I've also heard this from counselors, that it hasn't cost the taxpayers anything. And to those that are watching and all the comments I've seen on social media, there are many people, despite many inaccurate comments, that are absolutely correct. It has cost the taxpayers money. How much money has it cost the taxpayers?
Through the chair, Ms. Darlington could comment, but it's approximately $100,000 to date, plus when we exercise, as outlined on page two of the report, plus when we exercise the put option back. It says the buyer shall reimburse the seller for such reasonable legal fees for his transaction in reconvenance, if applicable, including all dispersments, applicable HST, including without limiting the generality of the foregoing land transfer tax in the event the property is reconvened to the seller, once presented with a receipted statement of account by the seller. So in this case, because it was a, what I would call an unrestricted put option in our favor, and the buyer and the, the original seller was at our complete discretion, we had to give them some comfort that, once we put it back to them, that their legal costs were going to be, legal costs and other dispersion costs were going to be dealt with.
Okay, now if I could just carry on, Madam Chair. So I guess, you know, I want to be perfectly clear here. I, I find this discussion of the moral high ground a little bit difficult to, to stomach or entertain, because if my memory serves me correctly, the first, when we sent staff to, there were three properties that were raided by the RFAB committee. This property was number one. When staff returned to council with the figure, it was 10 million or more than 10 million was their starting offer. That is not putting an offer out to council because they are so community-minded or interested in doing the general public a favor. They are developers that are interested in making money. They, this is not a new deal where they, where I coerced them over a table to sign a transaction. They knew exactly what they are signing. They have lawyers that work for them. They could have chosen not to sign the deal. They did. But it was after that first offer that Counselor Martin and I were driving to Ottawa, and I received a phone call, actually, I may have even come in on Counselor Martin's phone, I can't recall, but it was from a constituent who had heard that our staff never went back to the developer to make a counter offer. So this leaking of closed session information has been going on for quite some time. In that particular case, I believe, I don't have proof, it was actually a leak from the RFAB committee themselves, who we had signed non-disclosure documents to invite them into our closed session conversations. At that point in time, from the, the constituent said to me, was criticizing Norfolk County staff, said, "How could staff not go back and put a counter offer to that?" And my response, I believe Counselor Martin can attest, was the offer or to us was so ridiculous at more than 10 million dollars that I didn't even know how you would counter a suggestion like that. It was so out there. Following that conversation, the developers happened to reach out, and they wanted to come back to the table. Subsequently, council provided direction in closed session to have me, the mayor, which was unusual, yes, but to have me attend the meetings with staff to be able to negotiate, see what new price we could get out of the developers. So the initial offer was more than 10 million with no put clause. I came back to council with an offer of 3.3 million with the put option, which I believe nobody had ever even heard of, I'm going to wager, around this table. So we got a new deal. So these guys didn't do this out of the goodness of their heart. They did it because they saw the ability to make money. And I believe we also have an obligation to the taxpayers of Norfolk County to make them money, given that this deal has cost us over $100,000. So staff is not suggesting in this report that we don't exercise the put option. What they're suggesting is we have until June to determine whether or not we're going to exercise it. So... So if between now and June, we were able to come up with a buyer that was willing to pay more for the land and make up for the $100,000 we've lost, and given that I just signed another 20 million in debt, is it not our obligation to the taxpayers to try to make that money? And if between now and June, nobody comes forward, and staff is not able to show a plan as to how this could benefit the county, well, guess what? We still have the opportunity to, you know, to exercise the put option, and I will be happy to be the mover to exercise the put option at that time. But to sit here today and say that you're unwilling to pursue an option to make back, at the very least, that money for Norfolk County taxpayers, I struggle with that. Furthermore, you know, this discussion from the RFAB committee as to the potential for this land for a future hub, I also don't support that. I agree with you, Counselor Columbus. I think we're past that. We're not doing a hub anymore, but, and the criteria of which they use to assess and rank those properties, they are no longer valid, because no longer would we need 25 acres. I believe we need a pool. I think a pool in Delhi might even be a great place to put it. But, you know, to say right now, we're going to exercise the put option, to me, that's doing a disservice to our community. We have until June to exercise it. Why not try to see what other options there are between now and June to make us money? And I ran this by council ahead of time, Madam Chair, and if this is going to be insulting to, or, I don't know what the word is, insulting to some, my apologies, but I've heard that there's an old saying that I, recently, it's called double stupid. So I guess I'm double stupid, first of all, for negotiating what everybody claimed was too high of a price on the land, and now I'm stupid again because I'm trying to make money for the taxpayers off of that land.
Counselor Huffman.
Thank you, Chair Martin. And again, just wanting to go on the record, after hearing the mayor's comments, that yes, you are correct. I am unwilling to, at this point in time, make money for the taxpayers on a deal that was very clearly stated, and I reiterate it to my constituents over and over again, that if the provincial and federal funding did not come through for the hub, that the money would be returned. So therefore, to me, very simply, the money gets returned. If you want to look at future land perspectives and things like that, then we can bring it forward and do it on an open, open and transparent way. And just because information, people have opinions and things like that, I refute the fact that every time, it has to be some kind of leak of closed confidential information. There's a lot of people out there who know everything that's going on, and there doesn't necessarily have to be any leak. So I take offense to that.
Counselor Taylor.
Thank you, Chair Martin, and through you. I'm of the opinion that we would be doing a disservice to Norfolk County to not at least take the time to weigh and consider the options surrounding this land thoroughly. Take the time to weigh our financial position, take the time to weigh input from the public and interested groups, take the time to weigh the needs of the county. And why not take the time to weigh the need, like weigh the opinions of our legal counsel, much like Counselor Van Passen's question, that isn't going to be answered today, but it was of a legal nature. So I think at least taking the time to weigh those out is certainly in the best interest of the county. Not saying we won't be exercising the put clause or not, but options are. I just think taking the time to thoroughly weigh what's in front of us is absolutely necessary.
Counselor Roberts.
Thank you, through you. My position is to be supporting the motion that's on the floor currently. I believe that the costs spent to date are truly sunk costs. We will never recruit those funds that we've spent exploring the option of building a community hub. Those monies are paid for and spent, and we could be occupying more staff time pursuing a deal that essentially has fallen apart due to not receiving one-third, one-third funding from upper levels of government. Should the motion fail, absolutely. I think staff have done their fiduciary responsibility by presenting different options contained in this report, the comments regarding morality or integrity, keeping the council's promise of returning the funds should this project not be successful. In no way is disparaging of staff. They are doing their responsibility by giving us all of the options, presenting them before us here, and I thank them for that. I believe politically, we've all felt the pressure, and we all feel the need to stand up to our word, that we said it was going to work a certain way, and that if we didn't secure this funding, that this would be the outcome. And it's my impression and my feeling that we've arrived at this outcome. It's a bitter pill to swallow, but I think in order to move forward with exploring options B, C, and possibly D for recreation use, we have to get this decision behind us. I'd rather that decision be made this evening than later on in the new year. So I'll be supporting the recommendation and the motion on the floor.
Mayor Chop.
My comments would only be related to the meeting that we had with the developers was threefold. One, it was to assess whether or not there would be an interest in the parcel, partial sale of a land, i.e., could we keep five acres and give back 20? What interest there would be in the potential of a joint development for something like an affordable housing development? And the third reason that I met with the developers was because I foresaw that it was unlikely that we were to receive the funding. I think you had to be living under a rock if you didn't see that coming. And was to give them a heads up that, you know, we may be coming knocking on the door to exercise that put option, and perhaps they needed to get their house in order for when that day arrived. So, you know, I sincerely hope, it will be interesting from the developers, because the impression that they gave us at the meeting was that they had the money tied up, and it was going to take them a couple months. So hopefully, they use that time from July 10th until now to get their house in order and to have the funds available. But you think that there's a morality issue with the developers? My point is, I'll just be, you know, in today's environment, I wonder what coming up with a couple million bucks is going to be like.
Counselor Columbus.
Well, I was just ready to, hoping that you would call the vote anytime soon.
Yeah, I haven't had a ch-
To expedite the meeting.
Right. I haven't had a chance to speak yet, but we can do that after. Any further comments before I... Counselor Michele, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And as, you know, I think the mayor's made some very good comments, and these are all great possibilities, but unfortunately, that is not the perception of the people that I represent. They were told that this was the deal. We don't get the hub. The money that we put into it comes back. And yes, I'm sure that they are anticipating, there's going to be some, you know, peripheral cost, as our CAO has pointed out. But nevertheless, we told them an answer. I told them that answer repeatedly, and now we need to make sure that they know when Norfolk County Council says this is what the plan is, that we stick to it.
Thank you, Counselor Michele. Okay, I'd like to weigh in here before we go into, call the vote. I've heard a couple of things that I'd like to touch on that are outside of my speaking notes. The comment has been repeated a few times that the hub is over, and from where I sit, the hub is not over. This funding stream is over and closed, and, but I think that there is still another option that could be viable for this community, and unfortunately, we haven't made it that far in the discussion yet. The conversation surrounding good faith and bargaining, there is a way of doing business here in Norfolk County, and while we may not be able to control what the other side brings to the table, we can control how we react and how we respond and set the tone for how we want to do business, and what our word means to our constituents and to those that we deal with. I certainly supported addressing this and dealing with this file today on a straw poll, not because I wanted to rush through this process, but because I wanted it to come forward at a council and committee meeting rather than council. That brought me some comfort, because we can certainly readdress it again next week. But I have concerns again. You know, we've got a 250-page addendum that's gone online, which is great. There's a lot of great information. It's a lot of repetitive information. It's a lot of information this council was already privy to. But when we put it all together and add a little bit of a verbal update to it, the public doesn't have the ability to respond appropriately. So if I was on the floor today, I would be moving for a deferral on this, because RFAB hasn't been able to weigh in. They had a meeting last night where they considered passing a motion to request council to defer-
Madam Chair, I got to call a point of order on this, too. Technically, you're not supposed to debate on-
Well, Mayor Chop, we've listened to you speak for more than five minutes today, and we've sat here for about two years, and you've done this time and time again on a vote.
I have not spoken on a motion. I asked plenty of questions during the question period, but I haven't spoken on a motion.
If you wish to challenge me, let's vote on it.
And if I have, you're more than welcome to call a point of order on that. What my suggestion would be to be, pull the item then, next week, at the council meeting, when you're on the floor, and you can have a discussion at length with RFAB, if council's willing to move to hear them at that meeting.
I'm going to finish my statement unless you'd like to challenge me on a vote. Thank you. RFAB was, did not pass the motion to go through with a deferral, because Mayor Chop's comments supported that this council would support them coming forward next week to provide a deputation with council, despite the fact that that is not our normal practice. So I hope that this council will follow through on that and allow a deputation next week. But emails subsequently were sent to this council from RFAB members specifically discussing concerns around good faith and how we wish to negotiate in our community, asking for serious thought to be given to how we wish to proceed, comments regarding the committee's concerns about this potentially violating the fundamental spirit of the deal, and I have to agree and resonate with those.
Point of order. There was only two people that, three people, that were actually four people, that were in the room in terms of-
What are you point of ordering right now?
Understanding, because you are not allowed to debate on a motion.
Then challenge me, because I'm speaking.
I am challenging you then.
So you'd like to vote on that. Great. Andy?
All right, so the process is to immediately vote upon the chair's ruling. All those in favor of the chair's position, please raise your hands. The chair's position carries.
Thank you. Mayor Chop, please turn off your microphone. Where was I? Concerns about fundamental spirit of the deal being jeopardized, which I happen to agree with. This email was then followed up by two additional members of RFAB who shared similar concerns in an email. Further to that, we received an email from, all of council did, Paul Hayek and Nancy Renee Labris, Labris, the Zatia Group, that expresses surprise and disappointment of the potential sale. They wish to review and respond fully next week to this council. So again, another reason why I would have potentially gone for defer if I was on, defer if I was on the floor. I replied to them, and they shared additional comments about how they've been having this conversation with the mayor and the CAO since July. And my question is, in July, there was direction from this council to support an application for the community hub, and there was direction to support the use of land for recreation purposes. And I feel as though this, while I support staff going and finding additional options and bringing them in front of council, I would have rathered them come to council and get that direction. So we were all kept on the same page. We all knew what was happening with regards to this file. The second meeting, I believe, would have occurred after our funding announcement was made that we were not receiving funding. So I have concerns that we're not fulfilling our obligations, which stated that we needed to not receive funding from provincial and federal government to activate the buyback clause. These conversations were occurring before we received information about funding. As council, we have the duty to ensure we discharge our obligations to the Zatia Group under our agreements and give direction to make sure this is done. If not, I feel as though council could be failing badly and leaves us at risk for, at the very least, public criticism, if not more. So my preferred option would have been a deferral if I'm on the floor. I'm not able to move that. Additionally, I would have liked to see a third option where we get the money back today for the taxpayers of Norfolk. We hold true to our word, but additionally, have further conversations with the landowners to see if they would be interested in reversing a put clause until such time where RFAB would be able to weigh in. Community members could provide a deputation. However, that's not the motion on the floor today. So without any further comment, I'll pass it over to Mr. Grisell for a reading of the motion and a recorded vote, please.
We can't do recorded votes at committee, but I'll read it. That report, CS 2027 lands for the all Norfolk Community Center, next steps to be received as information, and that with respect to 682 Ireland Road, Simcoe, council directs staff to proceed with option 1A, and that with respect to portion of, the portion of 227 Deco, Deco Road, Simcoe, council directs staff to proceed with option 2A, and further staff. Yeah, I think the last clause comes out, sorry. I think that's it.
Okay. All in favor? And that's carried.
Through the chair to council, I just want to be very clear. Seems to be some indication that there's multiple meetings with the developer, and staff maybe acted inappropriately. I want to be crystal clear, and there's sufficient evidence to show there was one meeting with the developer on July 10th for about an hour in the mayor's office. There was, there was three topics to it, and that was discussed. There was a second meeting scheduled for July 23rd that the developer canceled. There was no other discussions with the developer at that point in time. All the information was disclosed to this council on a confidential memo. I did reach out to other developers on what's called, which is a reasonable market process, called a market sounding process, to determine whether the appraisals, because if I was council, I'd be sitting around there saying, "Why is one property appraised at $283,000 and other ones appraised at $130,000 because, and they're right next to each other?" There was significant issues with the ability to service that. So before staff put these recommendations to the table, they did some research. But I thought that was appropriate. If there's any indication that there was other meetings than that, I would highly contest that. There was nothing that went on, and I, you know, I'm disappointed that, you know, someone can send an email and say something, and that's accepted as truth without any verification. So just want to be very clear on that point. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have no motions today. Notice of motions, Counselor Van Passen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to ask the question whether it's even legal or legitimate at this time, but this is a recommendation to go to council for approval next week. Is council willing to entertain any counter offers from the sellers if it comes from their perspective, and would we allow staff to listen to them over the course of next week? Because you did recognize that we did get an email from the sellers, that they will be reviewing it and respond more fully next week. So are staff allowed to speak with them and, because, you know, maybe they're willing to propose an alternate solution from their end rather than ours? We have made the fundamental decision. I think, again, that is, from moral grounds, the right decision to do, but I do have to compliment staff for going to the effort, putting options on the table, doing those things that I think have been lacking at Norfolk County. Our staff are thinking of the future. They're not thinking of the immediate needs today. You know, if somebody around Norfolk County had thought of purchasing some land 15 years ago, we wouldn't have scrambled around at the last minute trying to find a place to plunk something if we got government funding. And, you know, staff took the time and brought us all the information. Did their due diligence on that. But if an offer comes back from the seller, maybe they don't want it back right now, or maybe they want a delay in that timing. Are we going to allow staff to bring back supplemental information at the council meeting that might change this decision at that time?
I, again, would have preferred a deferral to have these conversations, but any comments? I believe that the, I could be wrong. The way I read the email, it was addressed to council and the clerks, that information would be coming to council next week. You know, I, I can't answer that on one vote. Seeing no further comments or hands. Maybe we'll bring that back up next week. Counselor Van Passen, you're next with- Councilor Van Passen, you're next with notice of motion. Did you want to speak to that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I almost thought, forgot that that was at the end of the agenda. Yeah, I'm bringing this forward. I've had some requests over the summer suggesting that, you know, society has matured a little bit since the prohibition era of the 20s, and the province of Ontario has changed their regulations that would allow an individual to enjoy a beer in a park somewhere under certain conditions. And I talked to the clerk, and I thought I would bring this forward just more on the long, is there enough interest among council that the clerk and staff can spend some time researching the details and bring a report back? Because I'd hate to waste our staff's time doing something when the end result is already predetermined and nobody has any interest in even looking at it. So that's why I'm bringing forth a notice of motion. If there's interest, then we can direct staff to get us some more details and more information and come back at some point with a report.
Thank you. We'll move along. General announcements. I'm gonna, before I forget, go immediately to Ms. Darlington for some comments.
Thank you, Chair Martin. As outlined in an earlier report to council, we're currently engaged in a multi-promned marketing campaign to promote the 2021 budget survey and two virtual engagement sessions with finance staff. We've so far reached more than 800 responses to our budget survey with an additional 200-plus survey comments that have come in and dozens of social media comments. Unfortunately, we have not seen significant interest in the engagement sessions despite a media release posted to the county website, a targeted invite to members of county boards and committees, social media posts, and paid advertising. We suspect this might be because of the success of the survey so far. Those who have taken appeal, they have already expressed their opinions. Given this lack of interest, and in collaboration with the chair and vice chair of the budget committee, we think the most efficient way forward would be to collapse the session into one. So we would cancel this week's session and move it into one more robust session next week. We would connect with those registered for this week's session and invite them to participate in next week's event, or provide them with the presentation and offer to answer any questions via phone or email, or even through a Teams meeting. As a result of collapsing the one session, we would propose that we hold a second engagement session in October or November, once the survey results have been presented to council on October 13th. We feel that that might generate some additional comments and interest, so we would just have some additional sessions after that report is considered by council in October. So a brief update, we will be collapsing the two sessions into one, and then we'll be having some additional engagement sessions later into October and November.
Thanks, Shelley. I apologize, council. I forgot about Councilor Michelle's staff memo that he pulled from the information package. So Councilor Michelle, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I don't, I was going to make a point of order about that, but I don't think I need to, so thank you very much for catching that. I have asked for some, a brief discussion of the item 6D in the council information package about the, an update on the enforcement by our bylaw staff regarding cannabis operations in Norfolk County. And I first want to commend Superintendent Milson and all the bylaw staff involved with that file, with the tremendous continued growth of these cannabis operations that are causing so much grief among some of our constituents. And in particular, to mention that, as it says in the report, Norfolk County, partly, I think, because of the proliferation of all these operations, up to, as the report says, up to now, we have about 70 in Norfolk County, which is a far higher number than in our neighboring municipalities. But nevertheless, I'm very happy that Norfolk can be counted as the first municipality to lay zoning bylaws against these cannabis operations. So I just wanted to point out the very good work that I believe that the bylaw enforcement department is doing with regard to cannabis operations in Norfolk County. Thank you.
Thanks. I need Councilor Columbus.
Well, I echo the words of Councilor Michelle. I did ask for this report to come forward because we're getting a lot of calls and concerns, especially at this time of year. And several years ago, when this Health Canada put the rules out, I did say that Norfolk County would be the cannabis capital of Canada, and I think we're getting there. Thank you.
We do have a deputation coming forward next month, I believe, to discuss some of this information, so this might be a good one to keep for your files and, or have a refresher of before the deputation comes forward. But I agree, lots of great results coming from Mr. Milson. Okay, back to general announcements. Councilor Huffman?
Thank you, Chair Martin. I have a question for staff, I guess it would be. Wondering, I've had many messages from constituents in regards to talking about the call for submissions and things like that, and noting that anything that is affiliated as a senior center is exempt from this, the call for submissions. So just wondering what it is in a community that makes a building eligible to become a senior center? Is there a percentage of use that's used by the community that are seniors that deems that? What's the protocol for that?
Shelley, Mr. Burgess is looking at you.
Thank you. We visually can't see in committee room A, council this evening, so thank you for that cue, Chair Martin. So I would refer council back to the May report that staff provided on the call for submission process. And in that report, there was a number of senior centers identified, certainly the one in Simcoe, because council had directed plans for that particular facility. Council also had provided some direction with respect to the Portover facility. And finally, in that May report, Councilor Columbus identified the senior center in Delhi to be excluded. I am not the specialist by any means in community services programming, so those were the halls that were identified as seniors. So I think I would need further clarification, perhaps from Mr. Kriglin, who's not in the room this evening, on if there is some clarification or some requirements that are outlined on what has been determined as a senior center.
Okay. Thank you very much, Shelley.
Any further general announcements? Councilor Michelle, then, Councilor Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I saw you, Mr. Godby. I did see you.
I just want to mention for the people, again, in the western part of the county, that we have the closure, temporary closure of the South Walsingham Transfer Station during the week of October 13th up to October 17th. And so I just wanted to mention that publicly so that, you know, we don't have anybody with their pickup truck full of stuff driving all the way out there on Highway 59 and finding that it's closed during that week. This information also will be put on social media for the public, but I thought today was also a good day to mention it. Thank you.
Councilor Roberts?
Thank you, through you. Just a general announcement about some fun activities that are ongoing with the Simcoe BIA. We're currently getting some scarecrows and some seasonal decor up in Simcoe. If you're interested in participating, I believe you can get a free mum, that's plant. And we're gonna be having some ongoing announcements through the Facebook page, on the BIA website. And we're also beginning to schedule some fall cleanup activities. I'm hoping to get one going for Saturday, September the 26th. We're hoping to do a morning cleanup. And then we're also gonna have another one on September the 29th, and we'll do an evening cleanup. But we are rapidly losing daylight, it would seem these days, so we're hoping to get that going probably just after 5:00 PM. So look to the BIA's website and to their Facebook page, and you'll see when these events are being scheduled, and hopefully we can get a good turnout, and everyone can participate and continuing to help revitalize our downtown. Thank you.
Mr. Godby?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Councilor Michelle, for drawing attention to that info memo with the various South Wall Transfer Station. That was one of my items. Just further to that, on talk of waste management, I just wanted to throw it out to council quickly that our household hazardous waste events for this fall, which I know that everyone is aware that we had canceled our two spring events, we had previously discussed the need to modify our services this year, we'd done online bookings, and I just wanted to bring it up that as of, I believe, yesterday, that we have successfully booked our full time slots for both of those events. So, I mean, it seems to have been received very well. The general comments we got back from the public at, so far, is that they like the idea of having these appointments scheduled so they know what time slot they can get in, and we can push these people through while still ensuring that we're meeting all of our COVID-related protocols. So just on that point, that was all I wanted to say. I've received a number of inquiries about the fall roadside mowing program, so I believe I responded to a few of you individually. However, I just wanted to raise it publicly that the roadside mowing that the county does, we have made a decision in the past, where council had made the decision in the past, provided us direction to not start until at least October the 15th. The reason for that being is for protection for habitat, for the monarch butterfly. So as we stand right now, our projected start date is October the 15th to clean up that fall roadside mowing. And just as one final point, I know there's been a number of inquiries about some of our ongoing drainage projects in Turkey Point, and I just wanted to give a quick verbal on the fact that staff over the past week, week and a half, have been having some significant number of meetings about these projects. We're working with some of the assigned engineers to take a bigger holistic approach and look at drainage in Turkey Point as a whole, as opposed to some of these smaller pockets where we have numerous municipal drainage petitions on file. And our plan at this point is to be coming back to this council in, likely it'll be November of this year, with a, more of a going-forward plan for Turkey Point as a whole. And that is the end of my updates, so thank you very much.
Okay. I just have one. I hate to even bring it up, but I don't have an answer, so I guess it's to Mr. Burgess. We passed our motion last week to expedite adult user groups. I know we're waiting on a report to come forward next week, but I have probably 30 people in my inbox who are asking for meetings with staff because they're not scheduling usage right now and spirited debates, and people are asking why the county's not doing that. Can you provide some kind of verbal update for me that we can all share with constituents and user groups with regards to adult leagues?
Sure. Through the chair to committee, I've received the initial draft report from CES in my inbox this afternoon, so it's on my to-do list tonight to review. Then there's usually some modifications, and it'll go through the public circulation on Friday at noon.
So, sorry, further to that, the comments about user groups wanting to meet with staff to begin scheduling.
I think, you know, we can certainly meet with user groups. I think we'd want to get direction from council at council meeting first, because there's a number of factors that are involved in that. So I think we can certainly meet with them, but we can't do anything binding until council approves the report. So staff was focused on developing the report, getting that to, getting that into circulation for this Friday, and then council on Tuesday, and we can move forward after that.
Okay. And I think from my position, I felt as though the motion was worded, that it would be expedited, and that assumptions would be made about last year's scheduling. So I was surprised to hear that user groups weren't meeting with staff or having the scheduling conversation. I know that there's still things to be ironed out, but in an effort to be ready for when the report comes back next week, that's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, through the chair, there's still, the biggest user groups still haven't firmed up their numbers also, right? So you have to, you know, and there's a likelihood that, you know, we want to firm up all our big user groups. They're still working on some of those numbers and those locations, so, and the hockey groups are working in eight-week schedules at this point in time. So we have options for scheduling at this point in time, and we're working through internally. You have to remember, as we pointed out in the report, I'm just going through our emails here, you know, we're figuring out how not to clean portable toilets because we need that staff into the arenas to make it. So there's, you know, there's lots of moving parts, because we don't actually have the people to do this at this point in time. So, you know, before we schedule it, I've always said, you know, we need to make sure that we can actually operate and do what we promise. So we're still working through staffing. We may be hiring, which was noted, which would actually require approval, because that's outside the FTE allotment from the budget process. So, you know, again, council would have to approve that. Staff can't move forward on that. So before we make those commitments, this council needs to, this council needs to make those approvals at the Tuesday meeting.
Okay. So no user groups can expect to meet with any staff prior to Tuesday because?
Because we need staff and council approval.
Councilor Michelle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just hoping I can take this opportunity, because a thought just occurred to me as you were, we were listening to Jason's response. Jason, a fair number of people have suggested that we don't necessarily, for adult leagues, need to have additional staff for cleaning, that volunteers or one member of that user group could actually do that. Is there a specific reason why we are not entertaining that possibility?
Yeah, we'd waste 10 hours of my time in a grievance meeting with our union, and therefore, and we'd lose that one.
Councilor Van Passen and Columbus, you both have your microphones on. Did I miss you, or? Okay. Perfect. No problem. Just making sure. All right. That concludes our meeting, so I need a motion to adjourn. Councilor Roberts, Councilor Geisens, all those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Good night.